Good evening. The Charter Township Plymouth Board of Trustees meeting for Tuesday, June 25th, 2019 will come to order. Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Trustee Heitman.
Here.
Trustee Dempsey.
Present.
Clerk Borba here. Trustee Dorchevitz.
Here.
Trustee Kermy.
Here.
Treasurer Clinton.
Here.
Supervisor Heisey.
Here. Item B is the Pledge of Allegiance in honor of the University of Michigan Bags Bowl Team going on, winning the national championship. We're going to have Treasurer Mark Clinton lead us in the pledge because he used to play for the team way back in the day.
He couldn't get into state. Go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Say that one again.
Thank you and go blue.
You didn't hear that one.
Sorry, Bob.
No, he didn't. No, congratulations.
Item D is the approval of the consent agenda. Any comments or questions?
The approval of the agenda.
Oh, agenda.
Yeah, a couple of things.
This is the agenda. Not the consent agenda, sorry.
Oh, agenda?
Yeah.
Mr. Supervisor, I move for the approval of the Tuesday, June 25th, 2019 agenda.
Motion's been made by Clerk Borba. Is there a second? Second by Trustee Heitman. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item D is the approval of the consent agenda. Comments or questions?
Comments. Once again, our mutual aid, 13 to zero. We gave out a heck of a lot more than we received. I've got some concerns about how we document this because one of the things we keep talking about is we have to make sure everything's documented, you know, and if we look at alternatives, we want to make sure everything looks good. So, one thing, I ask Mutual Aid Department to please put full addresses down when they're talking. And it looks like we go to Kroger a lot and it looks like we do a lot of assisted living and senior living, so that's one thing. But the other thing is transports, page 32. We do a percentage of where we transport to. And we do that with the number included of people we have not transported. So can we take that number out, which makes a lot more sense? It says 92 out of our really 123 went to St. Mary's, which is 75 percent and not 56 percent. So that's a big difference. You know, it still comes out the box first.
Does that include HVA transports at the 92? Or is that something else?
That's everybody.
Yeah, that's everybody, whether it's HVA or Plymouth Township. This is where they went to. The report that's done, the agency activity summary, this is a report generated by our vendor and they have been unwilling to change it for just us. HVA uses the exact same program we use.
So this is Clemis from Oakland County?
This is not Clemis. This is a company that was bought by Physio Control. It was a company called Sanseo, which was bought by Physio Control, which was then bought by Stryker. And it's their program that we use. We use it. Dallas FD uses it. HVA uses it. I think LA uses it. A lot of other big departments.
Well, it's no good if the numbers are wrong. So, so we either change the numbers ourselves or we get rid of the company and get somebody who can do it. I mean, we can't look at, you know, numbers that they're off quite a bit, so.
Well, what they do is they give you a per, they give you the correct numbers and they give you a percentage based on all runs that you responded to. And some of our response, runs we respond to, no patient goes to the hospital.
But the title says transport two. And if you don't transport, the number should not be included in transport two. It makes a lot of sense. So, I mean, there's 41 that are included in here that have skewed the numbers.
That says left blank, the 41?
Right. No, the 41 we did not do anything with. We did not transport them.
Yeah, those 41 patients did not go to the hospital.
So really, when we...
But as the percentage goes, it's, it shows it as a percentage in the document.
So really, that 92 percent that went to St. Mary's, that 92 number is really 75 percent of all transports.
So it's 164 minus 41?
123 total, yeah.
So 92 over that number.
Correct. 74.8, yeah. I mean, we got to look at good numbers when we start making decisions on transport and things like that, so. Second thing I have is on the township bills. I made a big thing out of...
What page?
Page 54. A big thing out of the fire department using Township Auto Parts Store. And they're doing an outstanding job and they did that. Now I've got the DPW using Napa and downtown. Come on, guys. Number one, we got to use Plymouth Township. And this was for an air filter and an oil filter. So, I mean, they have those at Autozone. So please, let's try to go to our own first. And that's all I've got.
I do have a question on the police department report. I noticed that in the first four months...
What page, Jerry?
Uh, boy, let me, thank you for...
I'll find it. Go ahead.
It's on the accident report.
Page 43?
Yes. I noticed that there's about a 15 percent increase in accidents in the first four months. I was wondering if there's a, over last year, over the same period of time? I wondered if there's a particular area that's a problem or, or was, what was the driving force, you think?
I'd have to look at the data, but I believe it's just got to do with the weather. If it's heavy snow, obviously people can't drive fast in heavy snow, so there's less accidents. If there's light snow, black ice, people misjudge it and it causes more accidents.
It could also have something to do with our speeding is at an all-time high. And, you know, we've made more traffic stops for speeding this month than we have in over a year.
Well, part of that is correct, but also we have more officers, newer officers. We just sent four of our new officers to Speed Measurement Task Force. So they are trained in radar and laser and they're out there writing more speeding tech.
So it's not really that people are speeding more, it's that we have more officers, therefore we have more enforcement?
Correct. And if I could say, it's probably due to it's a new toy to them. They want to go out there and use it.
Be careful out there, folks.
Right. They want to go out there and use it, so that's probably part of it.
So in that, the traffic stops, like what I talked about from last year, we don't have any numbers. You're going to work on that, right?
Yeah. The, so we just got power metrics for our 911 Viper system, our new system. It allows us to extract more data for the 911 calls and also allows us to create different graphs. So the monthly report that you guys will get in the future is actually going to look a little different. It'll be better. There'll be some newer graphs for 911 stuff. And we can also plug our numbers into that system for traffic stops, so you'll, different graphs for that.
Congratulations are in order for your emergency response numbers. They're amazing. To get to 321, I mean, you're going down dramatically and it's pretty good to get a three-minute response time on an emergency. Good jam.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Clerk?
I move for the approval of the consent agenda for Tuesday, June 25th, 2019.
Motion's made by Clerk Borba. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next is public comments and questions, limited to three minutes. As you know, this is not your only opportunity during the meeting to comment. We will also have another opportunity at the end of the meeting. And we do encourage discussion on individual agenda items as long as they are germane to that particular topic. We would also ask that when you come up to the podium, that you speak into the larger of the two microphones and speak very loudly because we've had a lot of complaints that people can't hear us on TV. Can't hear the people up there. So any questions at this time? Comments? Very good. We're going to move on to item F1. This is new business. This is the Historic District Commission Initial Appointments. And I'd like Trustee Dempsey to kind of walk us through this as he was the, essentially the author of the ordinance and has been assisting in the identification of the individuals willing to serve on the Historic District Commission. Jack?
Thank you. Yes. So we approved this a couple of months ago, the creation of this commission by ordinance. And there need to be seven members appointed, hopefully seven. The state law that we use to craft this ordinance prescribe certain seats, qualifications for certain seats, such as having recognized affiliation with a recognized historic organization, historic preservation organization, and if available, a, an architect. So I know that thanks to your efforts, there were lots of communications sent out seeking volunteers for these positions. And then there was also some informal attempt to encourage others to apply. I'm particularly delighted with the quality of the folks that have applied and that are on this agenda to be approved. We have two individuals with long track record in historic preservation in this community. We have someone who is the current Chair of the Planning Commission and his leadership on that has been stellar and I'm sure Trustee Dorchevitz would echo that. We have a diverse group and that's, I think, excellent, representing all aspects of the township. So when you create a commission and you start staffing it, you have to stagger the terms so that they don't all expire at the same time going forward. And so this is a proposal of the appointments, the initial appointments and their terms. And of course, for two of those individuals, if we would go ahead and approve this, they would be back in a year, hopefully to be reappointed for a full three years and so forth. So I hope we'll all support these names and these appointments and this commission can get underway and start doing some good for the township.
Okay. So the individuals before you tonight, Jack Dempsey can serve on the commission. That is actually allowed. It's not a violation of the Incompatible Offices Act. We have researched that, so Jack can serve in both capacities as trustee and historian, which he is. Wendy Harless is in the back. Wendy, if you could stand up real quick, just wave, okay? Wendy is part of the Plymouth Preservation Network and so she qualifies under that designation. Sybil Hunter is a citizen who's just very interested. Thank you, Sybil. Carol Suchek could not be here tonight, but she is the head librarian at, for the Plymouth Libraries and is very involved in both preservation and historical efforts and is very interested. Jim Salome is in the back. Jim, if you could stand up. He's also very active in the Plymouth Preservation Network. Thank you. Dennis Sabolsky is our Planning Commissioner representative and he's also Chairman of the Planning Commission, also very active in historical efforts in southeast Michigan. And then Kevin Grotowski is a licensed architect. And the state law recommends, doesn't require, but it recommends that you have a licensed architect on the commission. And we are very fortunate to have satisfied that requirement with Kevin. So we have a very highly qualified group that's in conformity with state law. They're eager to get going. What I would recommend, Mr. Clerk, is that when they have their first organizational meeting, that you could swear them all in at that time, somebody from the clerk's office.
It's an outstanding idea.
So, any other comments or questions? Chuck?
I have a comment and a question. The framers of our constitution spent a lot of time on private property rights. So I wanted to hear from you, are you aware of what those are and how do you plan to address that? Because historical commissions have a reputation for crossing the line on private property rights. And the other is with fraud. With the new state law, Jack, I don't know, has the state law been passed or they're still looking at it?
The tax credit?
Yeah, tax credit.
That's still pending in the legislature, yeah.
So you will have to be careful because to avoid having your neighbors and your taxpayers paying to remodel your house or your friend's house, you'll have to manage that because the state law will give a subsidy. So I wanted to hear a little bit about what you think of that, those two things. Does anybody want to say anything?
Well, Chuck, you know, this is, the Historic District Commission, unlike the ones, say, in Plymouth City or Northville City, is voluntary. So it's, the applicant, a homeowner, a resident, a property owner, has to come before the board and want that designation. They're not going to be out seeking people and forcing that designation.
All right. Some of the applications, I thought, said that they were looking to create, or wanted to be part of creating a historic district. Maybe I read it wrong.
Well, no, and I think everybody we've talked to that's, that wants to serve, I think they fully understand the scope of the ordinance and, and what it does and what it doesn't do. I, we've, we've seen that in some cases, historic districts around the state have, have gone on board, you know, on, on various requirements that, that not only, that actually serve to diminish the historic quality of a district because they make it impossible for property owners to...
Keep up their property.
To keep up the property in the way that they want. So I think everybody's on board with that idea.
All right, well, good.
So any other comments or questions from the audience? Then I am looking for a motion. Mr. Dempsey, would you do that for us?
I'd be delighted to. Thank you. I move to approve Resolution 2019-06-25-59, appointing the initial seven members of the Plymouth Township Historic District Commission for the terms specified therein.
Motion's made by Trustee Dempsey. Is there a second? Second by Trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Clerk Borba, yes. Trustee Heitman. Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Congratulations. Take a round of applause.
Thank you all.
Okay, we're moving on next to item F2. This is the appointment to the Planning Commission, recommending your consideration of Mr. Robert Osendorf to the Planning Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2022. His resume is attached. Bob is here tonight, too, if you have any questions for him.
I have the same question about private property rights. What is your opinion and knowledge?
Well, Bob, you can, since you're a one-man operation here, you can come forward. It's not, it's not like, it's not like a Senate hearing, so.
While he's making his way up, I just want to make mention of the fact that Mr. Osendorf is my neighbor down the street. He obviously is well-known in the community for his role on the Chamber of Commerce, the Community Chamber of Commerce, as well as making investments in the Plymouth community through restaurants. But I also want to indicate, and I don't want to embarrass him too much, but besides being a veteran and a very, very capable business person, he is a very decent human being who's very caring and giving. And it's a real honor and privilege to have someone like him in Plymouth Township.
Thank you, Jack.
Second.
I'd have to get burst on this, but my personal opinion would be to protect the private property rights. I think we need to take care of the people that take care of us.
All right, good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board or comments from the public? Hearing none. Jack, would you like to make that motion as well?
I'd be honored to. I move to approve Resolution Number 2019-06-25-60, authorizing the appointment of Mr. Robert Osendorf to the Planning Commission for a term ending June 30, 2022.
Motion's made by Trustee Dempsey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Kermy. Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Clerk Borba, yes. Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you, Bob. Next is item F3. This is Planning Commission Reappointment Recommendation for John Itzel. John currently serves on the Planning Commission. He was appointed about two years ago to fill a vacancy and I'm recommending him for a full term, again, to expire June 30th, 2022, and his resume is attached. He can't not make it here tonight, but he's been doing a decent job for us on the Planning Commission.
Do you look for a motion?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve Resolution 2019-06-25-61, authorizing the appointment of Mr. John Itzel to the Planning Commission for a term expiring, ending June 30, 2022.
Motion's made by Trustee Kermy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. Hearing no objections. Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Clerk Borba, yes. Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is item F4, Environmental Leadership Commission Ordinance Number 201016, Amendment 23, the second reading. Mr. Bennett has made a couple of changes since our last meeting and if you could explain those?
Sure. In Section B1 of the ordinance, it calls for the commission to have up to nine members. Because it is an unspecified number, I mean, it could be five, it could be seven, it could be nine. I changed Section D6, which previously stated that a quorum would be five members. I changed that to a majority of the members of the commission should, shall constitute a quorum. That way, there's flexibility to allow for the differing numbers of possible commission members. I also changed the violation and penalty to a civil fine from not to exceed $500 to not to exceed $100.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Mr. Bennett?
You're still going to make this a non-paying?
Correct.
Like the Historical Commission?
Correct, yes. Any comments or questions from the audience? Hearing none, I am, yes. Sorry, didn't catch you right away.
Carol Lernid from Lake Point. I find it curious that members of this group are subject to a fine, but the other two are not. Why is that?
Typically, when an ordinance is drafted, it almost universally calls for a penalty provision. Usually, under the Township's Police Powers Ordinance, penalties are made, misdemeanors. There isn't a provision in the Michigan Revised Judicature Act that allows for municipal civil infractions. Civil infraction is not a crime. It's a, it would be a punishment that's payable only by fine. Traditionally, as I stated, punishments or violations of penalties provisions are included in ordinances. For practical purposes, I can't envision a situation where this provision's going to be enforced.
Then why is it there?
Well, as I stated, traditionally, it's just part of a ordinances.
I find it insulting. This is a volunteer group and you have this fine hanging over everybody's head. For what?
Well, you say...
If you don't like these people who volunteer, get rid of them.
There's not a fine hanging over everybody's head. This is just a traditional placement of a provision in an ordinance with probably the least punitive penalty provision I've seen in an ordinance.
Again, the other two groups are part of this ordinance umbrella, yes? Or under the ordinance umbrella? I didn't hear anything about them also having this fine. Is that something in the small print that I missed?
I don't think it is.
So you're singling out the environmental group to have this, this fine?
The flaw in that question is it assumes that people aren't going to be fined. As I stated earlier, I do not believe, or I can't envision a circumstance where somebody is going to be held liable for violating this ordinance. If somebody, if a member of this ordinance commits misfeasance or malfeasance, that is there as an opportunity, as is removal of the person from the commission.
So we are going to agree to disagree?
If you wish to put it like that, yes. But I can tell you, in substance and practicality, we are on the same page. Because this is, this is probably never going to be implemented unless there's the worst kind of violation imaginable.
Then it should not be there.
Oh.
My two cents. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Very good. I'm looking for a motion.
I got one. I move to approve Resolution 2019-06-25-62.
Sorry, you're right.
Authorizing the second reading of Ordinance Number 1016. Is that the right number?
Yes.
Okay, up top it says something, 1026?
106.
It is. Okay, all right. Amendment Number 23, creating the Plymouth Township Environmental Leadership Commission to become effective upon publication.
Motion's made by Trustee Kermy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Treasurer Clinton. Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Clerk Borba, yes. Treasurer Clinton.
Yes.
Trustee Kermy.
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey.
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz.
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey.
Yes.
Trustee Heitman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is item F5. This is a Public Safety Millage Resolution proposed by Treasurer Clinton. And Treasurer Clinton, if you could walk us through this one?
Actually, Jack, would you, yeah. Jack was really the author of this, if you wouldn't mind walking the folks through this.
Just kind of the rationale, and then I think Mark can speak more to the accounting procedures inherent therein.
Thank you very much. So this arises from the fact that we haven't consumed all of the proceeds in the first year from the Public Safety Millage. There's still an amount left and that's one of the two purposes of this resolution. The other is to require the board on an annual basis to make a statement, a report to the township, to the voters, to the citizens of the township detailing how these funds were used. It's my experience that although you can have all the disclosures you want and all of the audits, it can be very confusing to the average voter, average citizen, certainly confusing to me. I think it's such an important thing that we keep faith with the voters who approved this millage last November, that we specifically show every year how this money has been used separately and, and simply, very straightforwardly. So the Treasurer and I have worked on this language. I had proposed certain other things which were convoluted, nonsensical, and otherwise not in the public interest. And so we resolved on this language. And really, one of the merits behind this is the, the first purpose, which is to hold and reserve a certain amount that hasn't been spent so that it can be used for proper purposes going forward. So I'll turn that over to you.
And we also talked, as you recall, when we were talking about the, you know, the millage itself, and I, and I provided some graphs that show the costs for pensions, for OPEB, for equipment, et cetera, are going to be escalating over the next 10 years. We're collecting more than we need today and we have to take that money and put it in reserve for the money that we're going to be spending in the future, right? Because, because of those escalating costs. We have to save. And that's exactly what happened this year, is we collected roughly $130,000 more from that millage than we needed this year, with the understanding that we would put that aside to pay for future liabilities and obligations. The only way to do that is by board resolution. We can restrict that surplus of $130,000, which means it can't be used for anything except what we designated during that Public Safety Millage. Unless the board comes back at a later point in time and basically unrestricts it. So once we say we're restricting that $130,000, again, it can only be used for the purposes specified in the millage language. Then I've, then I've agreed, and this is, it's not an easy thing, and I explained this to Jack, that when, when money's coming in, it's all coming into the same pot. And when we're writing checks, it's all being drawn out of that same pot. So it's, it's really an accounting exercise to, to specify where that money came from and what it was being used for. So I promised that at the end of every budget cycle that I would provide such a report to show specifically what the, the use of the millage funds was for.
Mark, will there be interest on this money?
Will there be interest on the money? Yes. I mean, we, we keep it in a bank account and it earns interest.
So the interest will stay in the public safety account as well?
There is no public safety account.
Well, however, we're designating that.
Yeah.
So it's like a rollover earmark for next year? Is that a fair statement?
Yeah, I think that's fair.
We have lots of designated mill, earmarked millages. This is unusual. So why are we picking this one to do this accounting at? Because we have several police and fire millages.
To avoid. Well, in terms, yeah, in terms of why this report, I think it's because we have to recognize in recent times, the reputation that government has achieved in not being transparent and not spending money wisely, in going to the voter and saying, "Give us money for this." And then two years, three years, 10 years later, you find it wasn't all used for that purpose. So this is really, it is a special thing. It, it's really to show the voters who dug into their pockets last November and approved this millage, that on an annual basis, until it expires, this board will show that it's spending those funds only for the purposes that were permissible for the millage. It's a special thing, but I think it's a special need, and it was a special millage.
All right, I understand what you're saying, but you almost seem to be implying that money was not, in the past, the township didn't have a, didn't levy millage that covered all of police and fire. It was subsidized from the general fund.
My, my comment about government is more in general.
Okay.
More in terms of perhaps.
Coming up with the road argument a lot. People are using that to obfuscate.
You go back to when the lottery was first implemented, and people understood it would be supplementing, it'd be adding to school funds, and perhaps that wasn't the case, so.
So it substituted?
Well, I'm not going to go.
Instead of having general fund money?
There is, I think there is a general feeling that that's what happened. And then, you know, there's been a lot of talk about lock boxes and so forth. I think people just basically don't have a lot of faith in government in general, taking in money and only spending it for the purposes that they've gone out and asked for it. And that's why I'm trying to say, let's this board step up, be totally transparent with regard to that, that special millage. And I think it will help the voters feel that they did the right thing. They didn't just give a blank check. They didn't dig in their pockets and find out that this board is spending money on haircuts and, and, you know, facelifts or something. I don't know. As much as I might need that.
Can I get one of those?
I've been thinking about it.
Kurt's tailing along with a haircut.
I dyed my hair.
So, Mark? And Plant Moran is okay with this? Auditors, finance people are okay with this?
Yes, Plant Moran said this is, this is absolutely approved way to go about this restricting the fund.
And then we would have to do this every year around this time?
Every.
Assuming there's an overage?
Assuming there's an overage, yes, then we would have to go through, through the same process.
Well, if there's not, you're still going to tell everybody where all the money went anyway.
Right, so it would be done.
We're going to get an accounting one way.
Right, after we go through the accounting and look at the use of the funds, we'll put together the report. If there's a surplus, we'll restrict it.
Mark, I guess it, the question, it begs the question, why the $129,000 wasn't put into the trust fund to just further reduce our liability?
Well, we're going to need it for things above and beyond the trust fund: salaries, equipment, pension. When I, when I came up with the 1.2 mills, it was a combination of all those things. You know, I guess we, I guess the answer is, we could have done that. Then we would have to pay less in an outgoing year.
Is what I'm thinking about, when you put money aside like this, does that attract Act 312 hands? No? All right.
It's a, it's a valid question. We, that could have been an option. We could have done that.
So we just would have overpaid, we would have overpaid pension or OPEB?
No, we put a, we put a voluntary contribution to OPEB of $1 million this year. It could have been an additional 1 point. That could have been a use of the money.
But it was a nice round number that we gave to the state?
That's exactly right, yeah.
Basically, as part of our get well plan?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the board? Questions or comments from the public on this item? All right, then I move to approve Resolution 2019-06-25-63 regarding the assignment of funds for 2019 from the November 2018 Public Safety Millage. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Heitman. Mr. Clerk, please take the roll.
Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Trustee Heitman?
Yes.
Clerk Borba, yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next is Item F6. This is the 2019-2020 Water Rates Recommendations from Treasurer Clinton. Mark?
Thank you. So as you can see on this chart, since August 8th of 2017, we have had the following rates in place. We've had $4.08 per 1,000 gallons of water and $6.12 per 1,000 gallons of water usage. The combined water and sewer rates therefore per 1,000 gallons is $10.20. What's happened or changed in the last couple of years is, A, Great Lakes Water Authority, effective July 1st, will increase our water rates by 2.7%. However, last year was the, let me put it another way. This year will be the first year that we are completely off the Wayne County sewage facility, and we're transporting all of our flow to Yucca. And the second thing is that one of the two bonds that was outstanding from Watuah expired at the end of 2018. As a result, our expenses for sewage through Watuah have gone down significantly. So Bob, if you can go up to the first spreadsheet. Keep going.
You want me to zoom out?
No, is, isn't there another spreadsheet?
Yeah, there were two, I believe.
This one, thank you. Oh, you know, I've got one here. Yeah. Couple of things just to point out on this spreadsheet. You see where the arrow is down the middle? That's the assumed volume that we use during our agreement that we reached with GWLA. We're assuming that we're going to use 1,296,933,000 gallons of water. And, and this, this is a sensitivity analysis that shows what happens if you use 90 or 95 or 105 or 110% of that water usage, the impact that has on your financials. So what you see down below then are the sources of revenue. If that's the usage of water, this is what we will charge for the water, this is what we'll charge for the sewage, this is what we'll make from other charges. So it'll be a total of, right there in the middle, 15.17, $15,178,000 worth of revenue. And Bob, if you could scroll down a little bit. This, this is a break even analysis. What I'm trying to do is make sure that we have enough money to cover our operating expenses, our debt, our depreciation, which I'll talk about in a second, and then see if we have any money left over, like for a surplus. So you can see that in that middle column, we, we definitely are covering our annual operating expenses, the cost of the water, the cost of the sewage, salaries, fringe benefits, et cetera. Down below that, we're covering our debt, the, the, the bonds that we're paying to Watuah, and principal and interest on our own internal debt for the water and sewer system. Down below is, it's an important point I want to make sure that everybody understands, and that's the investment. It's the depreciation. Because as these assets that we have and Watuah have depreciate, we want to make sure that we're, we're, we're continuing to collect that money and invest it, right, for a rainy day. So you always, when you're doing this type of thing, you want to cover your depreciation. And as you can see, we're doing that. And even after we cover our depreciation, we will still have, if my estimates are correct, about a $542,000 surplus for this water and sewer fund. The whole point of this analysis is to show that under all these scenarios, right? Whether we're using 90% of the water, 100% of the water, 110% of the water, more than likely, we will cover our costs and put money aside to cover our depreciation. Under that one scenario at the bottom, if we, if we only use 90% of the water, we'll be running about $166,000 deficit. But it's pretty rare that we only use 90% of the water. Usually, the, the estimates are pretty good. So, part A of my recommendation is that we maintain that total water and sewer rate of $10.20 again this year per $1,000, per 1,000 gallons of water. Then Bob, if you could go to that other spreadsheet. But what I am recommending is we change the ratio of that $10.20, where it used to be $4.08 for water and $6.12 per sewage. And I've got to be honest, I don't know where that came from. The sewers was always just a factor of 1 and 1/2 times the rate of the water. And I will constantly, during the course of a summer, get phone calls from people saying, "I'm watering my lawn. Why am I paying so much for sewage?" And I have to explain to them that the individual components of water and sewer really mean nothing. It's that total rate that really means something. And because at the end of the day, we have to cover the cost of both systems, water and sewer. And the only way we do that, because we don't meter our sewer, is to base it upon the total use of the water. Some people buy and accept that, that argument, others don't. But the point is, it, it, we still have to, we, it's, it's a total number. It's not each individual number. However, I would like to, and you can see in this analysis, a more realistic ratio of our expense requirements would put the cost for water at $5.60 and the cost for sewer at $4.60. Because that's a really more accurate representation of the revenue we need to cover the cost of those two individual components. So my recommendation is maintain the $10.20 in totality, but shift the ratios from $5.60 for water to, and $4.60 for sewers.
So from, from. So water rates would not go up for this year?
Total, well.
Water and sewer rates would not go up?
Total.
In total?
So sewer is currently 612?
Right. Sewer is currently 612.
So is this, back to what we just discussed, is this kind of an accounting?
Yeah.
Thing? The net result to the customers, no increase in their overall bill?
Here's the net result, here's the net result. There will be a slight. Every summer, we provide our residents with a 25% credit on their sewer, in acknowledgement of the fact that they're putting some of their water on their lawn, and it's not going into the sewer system. It by no means is, is enough to cover what really is going into the, to the water, but it was done a number of years ago, and I think people come to expect a 25% sewer credit. So when we lower the rate of sewer, the, the impact will be that that 25% sewer credit will become less. My calculations show that, that the sewer credit in totality will go down by a little, about $100,000 and spread across 8,600 residents. It will impact our residents by 11, about $11 per household. Their sewer credit this year will be $11 less than it was last year, all things being equal.
On average.
On average, yeah. So that's going to be the only impact, right? Because I shifted those ratios, the sewer credit will be slightly rest, less by $11 per household. Everything else will be equal to last year.
So changing the ratio is more of an equity fairness argument?
Yes, because if, if there are, if there are people who, I just, I'm just, just getting tired of giving that argument to people as I say, "Why am I paying so much for sewage?" And I have to explain that the ratios, you know, at the end of the day, the most important thing is the total number. But it's, it's easier to make that argument if those ratios reflect reality. And, and in the, the current state, they don't.
But at the end of the day, I'm still watering my lawn. I'm still paying more because I'm still using more water than I did the rest of the year during the summer.
It's just that you're getting, the 25% discount will be 25% discount off a lower number. And therefore, you'd have a lower, lesser, but it's not, it's maybe $10 to $15.
Yeah, $11 on average per house, right?
I think, I mean, that was my only concern, but it makes perfect sense what you want to do here. It makes total sense.
Yeah, you're, you're adjusting these rates really to account for the revenue requirement in each pot, right?
Well, let me give you.
The sewer cost and the water cost?
Let me, let me give you a practical example. ApsoPure, who loses, uses a lot of water in our community, has expressed concerns about the amount of money that they use for sewage, right? They're saying, "We're using most of the money, the water that we buy. Why are you charging me so much for sewage when we're not putting it down the drain?" And the answer is, again, the same argument, is you can't look at each individual component. You have to look at the, the total component, the total $10.20. But, you know, really, if, if, if we were to look at just ApsoPure as an example and charge them for water and for sewer, we should be charging them a lot more for water than we are today. And we should be charging them a lot less for sewage than we are today. At the end, it would all equal out. But if people really want to get that nitty gritty and look at individual components and make an argument, I need that to reflect reality.
So how does this new rate structure affect conservation? I don't know. I'm, I'm, that's why I'm asking. Does it make people want to conserve water, or does it encourage you to waste water? Or has no effect?
Their bills won't change, so I don't think it'll have any impact.
So whatever they do today, they're going to keep doing.
Well, I, I think it, it puts a premium, as, as the case every summer, of educating, reeducating, reminding residents not to overuse their sprinkler systems and so forth. There was a recent article in The Eagle about what's happened in the city of Northville, and they ended up with a penalty because their water usage was so high last summer. And I could go through the rates in this article, but they're much higher than our rates, I think, pretty sure, even before that penalty, so.
That happened, that happened to us. What year was that, when they were reconstructing M14? Our, we just got.
It was a Saturday in June.
Yeah.
A Saturday in June. It was a dark and stormy Saturday. It was a hot Saturday. They were pouring concrete all day long, using a lot of water.
And that was our peak day?
Peak day, peak hour.
Peak day, peak hour.
Jack, it's a, it's a crazy system. We got a 35% increase.
Yeah.
And it had to be negotiated down. It took a year. But it was a huge rate increase. The way, the way GL, I'll give you a, a, a one-minute overview of this, because it, it was mind-boggling to me the first time I went through this a couple of years ago with Patrick and with GLWA. Here's the way you get charged. Here's the way GLWA sets your rate. They, they set the rate at what is the peak hour of the peak day of the year. But going into the negotiation, you have no idea what the peak hour and the peak rate, the peak hour of the peak day is going to be. So you have to give yourself a little bit of cushion. You say, "Well, I promise I will not exceed X number of gallons on the peak hour of the peak day." And so you want to make sure that if you say, "I, I won't exceed 10,000 gallons," if you go one drop over that 10,000 gallons, boom, they hit you with that. So what happened there is they did a bad job of negotiating that buffer zone, and they got penalized for it.
And that's one of the reasons why we have the water towers. It's one of the reasons why we do our best to educate folks on watering after hours when the peak rates are not as high, and storage, that's when we replenish the, the water tanks. So, you know, we, it, it's a huge public education effort. And I will also want to thank Pat Felraf too, because he does monitor the, the intake and outflow of the water towers to the point where I think he's got all of the controls on his laptop, and he, he can manipulate it at any time of day from home to make sure that we are within our parameters. So it just takes constant monitoring by our staff and also by the public.
In the vein of education, I recommend two things on the three-month summer discount for sewer. Put it again on the bottom of the water bill. And Sue, please consider it for a newsletter and e-news to reduce the repeated questions that come from people that, "Oh, I'm not using my, the water. It's going on the lawn. I'm not, I need to have a discount on sewer." The answer is, you got a discount. It's been accommodated for. And that's why we don't have separate meters. We don't want that administration of separate meters. And in the end, you have to still generate the amount of revenue recovered, required to cover the costs and future investment somehow.
Just, I'll make one more comment, and then, and then we can move on to the resolution. But there is still, in my opinion, there's still a lot of room for improvement in this pricing model that we have. We still have, we, we vary based upon meter size. We have minimum. We still have, we vary based upon meter size, we have minimum usage, there are a lot of moving pieces in this, and I've looked at other communities, and they've gone to a much more simple model. GLWA charges us, 60% of what they charge us is fixed, and 40% of what they charge us is based upon usage. So, what other communities have done, they say, "Here's a fixed component to your bill, here's a usage component to the bill, and you're done," and it's very simple. In order for us to move to that model, would have been very disruptive and confusing to people, so I'm taking it a step at a time, right? Step one, I want to get those ratios of water to sewer correct, even though it's not gonna have any impact to the bill, in outgoing years, we can start looking at the fixed versus variable component, et cetera, but I thought that was just way too much to bite off, not only for us, but for our residents at this point in time.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments or questions from the board or from the public at this time? Then I am looking for a motion, a resolution.
Mr. Supervisor?
Mr. Hightman?
I move to approve Resolution 2019-06-25-64, which maintains the total water and sewer usage rates at $10.20 per thousand gallons of water. The individual water rate should be adjusted from $4.08 to $5.60, and the sewer disposal rate should be adjusted from $6.12 to $4.60, to more accurately reflect the revenue required to cover expenses.
Motion's made by trustee Hightman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by treasurer Clinton, Mr. Clerk, please take your role.
Trustee Hightman?
Yes.
Clerk Borba, yes. Treasurer Clinton?
Yes.
Trustee Kermy?
Yes.
Trustee Dempsey?
Yes.
Trustee Dorchevitz?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next is supervisor and trustee comments, I just want to update the board that we will not have a study session on July 2nd due to the holiday, we will be meeting on July 9th, and most likely, meeting on July 23rd as well. Also like to extend a happy birthday to my daughter Katie, who is 22 years old today.
Happy birthday, Katie.
Happy birthday, Katie. I missed a lot of her birthdays when I was up in Lansing, because we were always in session in June, and so now, the roles are reversed, I'm the one who's here in Plymouth, and she is a student at the Michigan State University in East Lansing.
I'm proud of her.
I knew you'd like that, Bob. So, happy birthday to Katie. All right, Bob?
Nothing.
Okay, Jerry?
Two things, I'm impressed with the very high quality of all the appointees for both commissions, and certainly the planning and the environmental, with things we have going so far. And the second, I'm very impressed with the desire of this board for transparency and preparation for the future, and not just waiting for an election year to turn around and say, "This is what we should do, but you guys, you know, this is a great setup." Thank you so much.
Jerry?
I'm fine, thank you.
Mark?
Tax bills are at the printers, sorry, folks.
Boo.
One of the two certainties in life, they should be hitting the post office on Thursday and mailboxes on Monday, so the tax cycle officially begins July 1st.
Did you place in there an explanation of why their taxes are going up again in this bill?
I did. I did, yeah, there's a little insert which explains the headly override from Schoolcraft, and then the taxable value went up by the cost of inflation, so...
The big one is Schoolcraft.
Correct, yep.
Jack Dempsey?
Just a very quick shout-out to the Swan Saving Fire Department.
Thank you. Chuck?
Nothing.
Okay. Next is public comments and questions, anybody in the audience? Yes, sir.
I'd like to say, good job on the transparency, I think it's good what you're doing.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Supervisor?
Hightman?
I move adjourned at 7:55.
Motion to adjourn by trustee Hightman, is there a second? Second by trustee Dempsey, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Our adjournment.